All right, it looks like we have a quota, so I'm going to call this meeting to order at exactly 7:00 PM. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will move on to the approval of agenda. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
All right, Len, do I have a second? Josh, do we have any discussion or additions or deletions from the agenda? Looks like we are all set. Oh, I guess I have to make a motion, did motion, so we have to do all in favor? That would work. Looks like it's unanimous. Sorry about that, everybody.
Did we see Bruce?
Yes.
Okay, I missed that.
All right, so, public input and announcements.
Not aware of any.
All right. So there'll be no board discussion of such public comments. Approval of minutes from August 17th, special and regular. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
All right.
Second.
You got a second?
Are you doing both at the same time?
Uh, you're right, we should probably do, it's one line item, but we should probably do, so we'll do the, the regular first. Can I get a motion? All right, a second?
Second.
Second from Paul? Uh, all in, all in favor? All right, is there any comment? None?
Bruce.
Bruce, I missed him, sorry, Bruce, I didn't see you there. Sorry, I can't hear, Bruce, hold on.
We didn't change that sound or don't.
Yeah, just a little bit of it. Hold on a sec, we're turning the volume up so we can hear you.
My mic's on.
Now we're good, now we can hear you. All right, Bruce, sorry about that.
I know.
So Bruce?
It's because BJ left.
Okay. The, like, the third from the bottom, the buildings and grounds.
Okay.
I think that needs to be fleshed out a little bit more because it's sort of misleading for me. I'm still not sure what happened. It says we changed our faucets and added filters. And my question at that point was, when did we do that? Did we do that in February or did we do that two or three years ago? Because it looks like we just did it, with these minutes, we just did it. And if we did, that's fine, if we didn't, it needs to reflect it. And second, uh, we talked about the state was comfortable with it, and I added that Bob Manfredi, the health inspector, was not comfortable. And that's not in there, so it's, it's like it's, it's smooth out a little bit here, and there was much, there's much more to it.
Do you, are there changes that we want to add now to get that approved, or do we want to push that to the next meeting and bring it back with some revised language? In other words, do you want to do it tonight or bring it back?
Bruce?
It's easy, you could do it tonight, just put in when the faucets were changed. And add that Bob Manfredi, the, the state health inspector was concerned, or rub and count it, and it's done.
Does it?
So faucets were changed a while ago, so I think making that change is easy enough. Didn't we just, we, so, you just set it out of order, like, comments after we voted on it? So we've already approved the minutes, so is there something that you have to do if we've approved the minutes to then? Oh, yeah. So like, we voted and we all, we? Because we did discussion and then we went to vote.
All right, so, hold on, Bruce, I, I can make?
The first meeting I was at, we need to, our additions or corrections to the minutes, and then we approve.
Yeah, can, can?
The last year and a half we've been doing it.
Can the person who made the motion retract the motion?
Well, I, I made the motion, you, you made the motion, so. So just, yeah, want to make a motion?
Who seconded it?
Paul did.
Okay, so, the second would have to withdraw their motion, and then the original would have to withdraw their motion, their motion.
So Paul, will you withdraw your second?
I do.
I do.
All right, so now we can, now we can bring it back to square one. All right, so, Bruce, so your concerns are with the lack of clarity around the date that the, um, the faucet was installed, and the language around Bob Manfredi telling you that he was concerned?
Right.
Okay.
But he's concerned as the county health inspector of the state, and?
Can I ask though, who is the primary liaison with the state? Because I think that's the person who should chime in as to any language perhaps, just because we have a primary liaison, is that Gary?
Yes, that would be Gary.
Okay, so can we maybe run the change Bruce is proposing by Gary before we put that in the minutes? Because, Bruce, you're not the primary liaison.
I can, I can get language straight from Gary, and I can put it in the minutes, and we can bring it at our next meeting for approval. I can do that.
Is that all right with everybody?
That's fine with me.
Fine with me.
Me too. So, well, against this, if Gary is the primary liaison, is Gary going to be contacting Bob Manfredi?
Uh, Tim Hart will be doing that, because Tim Hart's coming on Monday, so.
Okay.
So do we table the minutes?
I think that's probably the most appropriate thing to do, and I have that language, I just, it would, it would be a lot to tell it all to you verbally. I'll get it in the minutes and, and I'll make sure we get them back at the next meeting. That way, everybody's looking at it in front of them, and you can make sure it's accurate.
So, sort of Bruce's point, it's 11C, he wants to see something about the faucets, and then updated verbiage.
So, so why, what all we'll do is we'll go ahead and we will table the, table the approval of the regular minutes. So now, we, can I get a, um, someone to make that motion, to make a motion?
I'll make that motion, that we table the minutes till next meeting.
Do we have a second? All right, all in favor? It looks like it's unanimous. So now we will go on to the, um, minutes from the special meeting. And to do this in the proper order, do I have any additions to, additions, subtractions, or comments?
Can you explain to me when that, when that meeting was?
It was, it was supposed to be at 6:00 before the board meeting, but we did not have a quorum until almost 6:40. I think it was 6:38, so that we had the meeting for a very short period of time before the regular meeting. So. Can I get a, a motion to approve those minutes?
Could I interject a thing?
Sure.
If there are no additions or corrections, you can just accept them as, as presented.
Okay. There we go. Change of the way we do things, that's, that's okay.
It's a new school year.
All right, so let's move on here to student representative updates.
I will jump in, uh, I've been working with Caitlin Thompson, and she has reached out to Sydney Moser, who served last year. Sydney is still interested, but she just asked that she could settle into school a little bit more before she comes to the meeting. Uh, we also talked a little bit about expectations, if we, if we want to think about coming maybe every second meeting in the month or something like that, so that we give them an opportunity to come and listen and participate. But I think we have some students who are very active outside of school, extracurriculars, so it's sometimes hard for them to commit to every single meeting. Uh, Sydney's absolutely still interested. Caitlin did not have any juniors or seniors who were interested taking Chris's place. She does have a sophomore that's interested, so what she was going to do, uh, she was going to open it up to all sophomores and see if anybody else was interested and go from there, since she had no other juniors or seniors. I know last year we had been focusing on having one junior, one senior, uh, but I think it's still worth having somebody if we can't find a junior or senior.
Having perspective for a different class is not a bad thing.
Not a bad thing, yep. Uh, so she's going to continue that work of identifying sophomores, and we will hopefully have two student reps showing up at the end of September, if that makes sense.
Well, I look forward to it, I enjoy hearing from them, so.
Yeah, yep.
Perfect. Moving on, beginning of year update.
Uh, I, I will give that. I am absolutely incredibly proud of the work that our folks have done to open this year up. Um, it was kind of funny, I didn't really think about it, but somebody the first day of school said, oh, it's your first official school day. It's like, oh, I didn't really think about it, it seems like I've been here for a while, doing this for a while. But it was the first official school day, uh, as superintendent. Uh, we had a lot of new folks, new principals, new administrators, and we've been working through those transitions. Uh, I, I want to acknowledge that those transitions are challenging. People are learning new faces and new places to go, uh, to get what they need, but everybody has been incredible about doing that work. Uh, if we had a veteran staff, we could roll into the year and we'd all know what we were doing, it would be a little easier. Uh, so that's definitely a bump in the road, but I think the, the, the great part of that is folks have been managing that transition well. The people who are new, and also the people who are supporting them that have been here for a while, so that's been going well. Um, I, opening days, Doug, uh, came to see us, which was great, thank you Doug, we appreciate that. Uh, on the opening day in the auditorium, when we had all our staff here, I, I spoke for about 30 minutes, and I want to share with you what I did speak about. Two things that I feel very strongly about if we're going to be successful this year, trust and pride. Uh, I'll share my presentation with you, so that you can, you can see some of what I shared with staff. Uh, trust and pride are two things that have come up in this group, actually, going all the way back to when you were doing interviews for superintendent. We definitely talked about that idea of pride, and that idea of how do we, how do we build pride? That idea of pride doesn't mean we're the best or need to be the best, but we do good work and we acknowledge the good work that we're doing. Uh, how proud we can be of what we've accomplished, and that idea of building trust in the community, building trust from the board to the community, from administration to the community, uh, from administration to our staff. Uh, I, I shared some concrete pieces with staff around how the work that we have identified, uh, how that, that is helping us build trust. The organizational chart that the board tasked us with working on in the spring, we shared that with the full staff. And we highlighted how that was a way to create clarity, and how that ultimately can build trust. If we know who's supposed to be doing what, if nothing's hidden, if we're trying to create transparency, uh, we're building that trust. I think it's work that can be kind of nebulous and ambiguous and vague. So I think putting some concrete ideas behind it is incredibly important. Uh, that was the focus of a lot of my talk. Pride, we focused on how we can be proud of our schools, uh, and not say we're the best, but really confront reality, look at how things are going, and, uh, share with folks our successes, but also share with folks our weaknesses and what we're doing to address those weaknesses. I did not really talk about test scores, because I think talking about test scores is talking about something we're going to see far down the road five years from now, something that's a lagging indicator. And if I go into the auditorium and say, folks, you need to raise test scores, they're going to say, well, what have we been doing for years, trying? Um, if I trust them to do the work, if I, if I try to create clarity around who is doing what, and if we have that clarity and, and we can hold people accountable, then we will make progress and test scores will go up. Uh, so, the hope was that we focused on something that was supportive, and something that was concrete, and work that we can accomplish in a year, and address some of the challenges that I think we faced last year, to bring people together, uh, to work toward a common goal. We had good feedback, uh, from our opening day, uh, and I think the, the feedback was because we have a team that is committed to doing that work. We didn't just tell people what they needed to do, we showed people what we were doing, uh, and I think that mattered a lot. We're going to continue that work, I think that's going to be something that you'll see when we, when we come back to Personnel Committee, when we talk about admin evaluations. Uh, I sat down with two principals already, and we had a conversation around what are the concrete things that you're doing to build trust in your buildings? What are we going to see a month from now to show that you're making progress there? What are we going to see by the end of the year? So I think you'll see that theme pop up in our evaluations, I think you'll see that theme pop up in a lot of the work that we do, uh, this year. Uh, it, it might seem like a different focus, but I think it's, it's a needed shift in focus, if that makes sense. After folks had to listen to me for about a half hour, ramble on about that, uh, we, we got people moving, and we went to some rotations, and we heard from Officer Hoffman about what to do, uh, in school safety situations, run, hide, fight. Uh, we heard from Jody around hazing harassment and bullying. We heard from, uh, also about mental health and some of the things we have in place to address student mental health. We heard from our health staff around how to support, uh, students if we had, uh, school safety crisis. Uh, we did, uh, stop the bleed training, and then we addressed some other, other safety pieces. We did rotations of that, so we had people moving around the building, so we did not sit in the auditorium all day and talk to people. Uh, feedback on that was good, too. Uh, we spent the afternoon reconnecting. Uh, we were lucky that it was a really nice day, we had lunch, and we didn't have a 45-minute lunch, and okay, everybody back into the auditorium. You know, it's funny, you walk into the cafeteria, 45 minutes have gone by, and you see wonderful staff having wonderful conversations, and you say, okay, folks, we have something more important to do in the auditorium, everybody be quiet and let's go. Uh, we gave them the afternoon to continue that work of connecting with each other, which I think is, is huge work. So, our day was 30 minutes from me of an opening message, some rotations on school safety, and those different facets of school safety, not just one way to address that problem, and then a great afternoon of reconnecting, uh, with everybody. Wednesday was our first day of school, and I was lucky enough that I got to go to all of our schools in the morning, uh, and see how things were going. What I saw was incredibly smooth, what I saw were staff and students that were excited to be back. And everything that I heard from, from folks since then has been that it was a really smooth opening to school. Yeah, there were probably some hiccups, and we did some last-minute fixes, we had students show up that hadn't been registered yet, and folks jumped in and did what they needed to do, uh, but largely, things went smoothly. Foundation's building was ready to go. Not 100%, but we had an occupancy number, and we had everything we needed to have students in that space. Uh, we do have some pieces there that we are continuing to work with the contractors on. Uh, so, for instance, we have a temporary interior door, uh, that is on a space that's got a dryer. Well, we can't use the dryer with that temporary interior door, but the contractors are coming in mornings, evenings, weekends, to replace that temporary door, so we can use that dryer. But the space was ready and usable for students, uh, for the opening of school, which is great. Uh, we're actually meeting with contractor next week to finalize all of that. And then, other, last thing I'll mention, and if you have questions, uh, more than, more than willing to answer all of those, tomorrow we have a coffee hour, and that's district staff hosting that, and I had sent that out?
Friday.
Oh, Friday, sorry, thank you, Friday, thank you. Um, Friday morning, we have a coffee hour that we are hosting here in the lobby at Mill River. Our, our plan is to, to host that occasionally, monthly, and make some space for folks to come and interact with us, talk with us, so that you don't have to pick up a phone call, maybe leave a message, send an email, hope you get somebody. Um, we do try to respond quickly to everybody, but that face-to-face, I think, is important, in giving folks the opportunity to come to a space where we don't have an agenda, we're not giving a presentation, we're there to listen, I think is important. Um, we're, we're not getting people at board meetings, which is really interesting. And I was just having a conversation with, uh, one of our teachers today, and high school teacher said, yeah, things seem to be going well. I haven't heard a lot from the community. And, and I thought that was an interesting thing to hear one of our teachers say, because I said, you know, that's interesting, because I kind of feel the same way. Uh, we have some signs that there are some good things happening, but we haven't heard from the community in a while. Uh, we love people to be at our board meetings, but we want to create other spaces where folks can come to. Uh, and I think that's important, because if we're not seeing people at board meetings, maybe that's a good thing? But then we need to find places where we can see them, because we do need to have those conversations. Uh, we, we don't want to wait till somebody's frustrated enough to maybe come to a board meeting. We want to create spaces where we can keep having those conversations. So Friday Coffee Hour is our first effort at that. Uh, that strategic planning meeting that we had, our special meeting, we were just looking at those minutes. Part of that plan is to hold some focus groups at each school throughout October, so that we can create another venue where folks can come and tell us how they think things are going, uh, in person. So I'm excited about the beginning of this year, uh, and I'm excited to share some of the things that we're working on. And, and I wonder if you have any questions?
I don't have a question, but I have two comments of just, so, the Monday before school started, Tin Smith had their, like, open house. You know, we took our kids there, because now we have a first grader and a preschool in the school. And one of the things that happened in, like, multiple, like, groups of conversation that I walked around in, was talking about how there's a waiting list to get into schools in our district, and how there are people that want to come into the district, and we're, you know, we can't have them in that level. So like, that is a, it, and it, it was, people kind of felt, it seemed like people were feeling good about that fact.
We are, we're at 820. Last year, we were a little under 800, so we're at 820 students. Don't quote me on that, because that can change in a week or two, but when I give you enrollment numbers in October that are official, um, we'll, we'll see.
Yeah, and then the other thing was, my daughter lucked out and is one of the, it, her classroom has one of the screens that we, uh, got, that we purchased. And one, I, you know, I asked her about it today, and she's, she's like, it's great. Uh, you know, we have the special pens that work, and then when I picked up my son, because he goes for a short day, like, I could be, I was outside, and I could read everything that was happening on the screen, versus like, the old one was like, you definitely couldn't do that. So it's like, you, it's definitely more visible, and, uh, you know, Ms. Davis is, you know, I, I made sure that when I, on the open house, just being like, if you have any problem, you have to make sure that you're hounding BJ, because it's like, you know.
And BJ's doing some good work to update some of those systems, and when budget season comes around, I'm sure he'll have an ask for us. Uh, and Ms. Davis is awesome, so, thank you for sharing this, Josh. Questions, comments, Nick?
So the rotations, the different events on the safety and the mental health.
Yep, yep.
I think we may have touched on this before, is there a forward plan to do that on a recurring basis?
That's a, go ahead. Yeah, absolutely.
Just because I'm, I'm, um, yes. So we did have Stop the Bleed, EpiPen, Threat, Mental Health, and, um, yes, the fourth one.
HHB, hazing, harassment, bullying.
Yeah, um, Run, Hide, Fight with Joe, and so we're, um, in addition to that, um, I represented our district in a, um, regional tabletop exercise with a bunch of different districts and fire departments and police departments, uh, where we all got together to talk about, you know, like, what are best practices everyone's doing, and how can we better connect? In addition to that, we have school safety meetings set up over the next two weeks, um, with Joe and principals to do walkthroughs. Um, we just shared our emergency operations plans with all of the emergency management directors for each town, um, and have a plan to meet with Tim next week to talk about, um, whether we can get like, so some of the other districts have emergency cards for the emergency management directors, um, and so that's been really helpful. We are planning at the end of this month to send letters home to parents about just basics, about what they could expect in the case of an emergency. Um, very carefully written, Brooke Holston-Farrow from, from Fairhaven gave us her template, and so we're going to use that. Uh, meeting with food service next week to create an MOU for any emergency, so what that means is like, let's say that there was a flood and kids had to stay late, um, or there was some other thing where all of a sudden we had kids, we want to pre-create the conditions under which we can use their food and pay their staff if they're here to provide those pieces. Um, and another piece we're working on is getting, we don't have go bags for every classroom yet, um, so Amy Ridgeland, the head nurse, and I are working together to get every teacher a backpack with, like, a space blanket, um, some different medical supplies, um, the things that, a penny. Um, we were told by the fire department and the police chiefs would be really helpful in case they needed to tell who, after an emergency, who was the staff? So getting that is something, um, so all those pieces, and then when it comes to training staff, uh, Steph is going for safety schools training online right now, and we are talking about doing more follow-up for Run, Hide, Fight, potentially later in the school year. Uh, last thing, the state just updated their emergency drill guidance, because they closed down a lot of options during COVID, for, you know, COVID safety, um, and they just sent out new guidance, so we just reviewed all of that with principals. And one new thing with that is saying that we can and should do some lockdown drills, but we also can have options-based discussions as the drills with kids, developmentally appropriate. I don't know, like, just pointing out, we are not having the same discussions with a 10th grader that bear with a pre-2.
Makes perfect sense.
And?
That was a lot.
Oh, hit the nail on the head.
But we need to be doing a lot.
Yeah. And, and feedback we had from the opening day of rotations before lunch was largely that folks thought the timing was good. Uh, normally, we sit for longer, uh, in one place and don't move, so the timing was good, and they appreciated, appreciated being able to get all those facets, not just, hey, today we're talking about Stop the Bleed, we're done, or we're just talking about mental health, we're done. But to be able to, uh, do that work in, in one shot in a way that I think was good timing. Uh, would we do that exact same thing opening day next year? We may not do the same rotations, but we would probably keep that format. So we'll see, if school safety is still a higher priority, maybe. If we have something else that's a higher priority, at this point, it's hard to think that anything would be, uh, but you never know. Other, other questions, comments, thoughts, things you heard about opening days?
I, just as a public school teacher myself, I want to thank you for giving faculty and staff time to connect. Because trust and pride is built on relationships. And, you know, spending time together and knowing one another as individuals outside, you know, within the roles that we have in our school community, but also even outside of them on a personal level, are really very important for the work that we do and in building communities, so thank you for that.
Yeah, appreciate that feedback, thank you, Liz.
All set? All right, so we will now move on to, uh, budget calendar.
Hooray, um, and that'll be me again, and Liz, feel free, chime in anytime you want here. Budget calendar that Liz had shared with the group, uh, previously, I think she had shared it with full board. Uh, we had looked at this in Finance Committee, too, a little bit. Uh, this actually came up last night in our Buildings and Grounds Committee. Uh, this, I've updated a little bit from the version that Liz shared, because as we're rolling through this year, some things are, are changing actually already. We had, so, 8/22, we did have a Finance Committee meeting, and we had that conversation around a different budgeting approach. This idea that we even started talking about in the spring of, how do we build a budget that is clear, so folks know what's in it and what's not in it? How do we offer folks an ability to give us some feedback on, do we want money for the athletic fields in the budget? Do we want money, uh, for other things in the budget? And how do we get that feedback, how do we make that clear for folks throughout the process? And how do we get that feedback? How do we make that clear for folks throughout the process? So we don't just get to town meeting day and we'll see what happens. So we had a great conversation about that on the twenty-second. Our B and G meeting yesterday, we had a great, great conversation around how Buildings and Grounds can really uh, benefit, I think, from that thinking. So we had outlined some big pieces at each of the sites that are on the radar to set as priorities. We're gonna be working with Tim coming up here in September. And hopefully, this finance committee meeting to identify initial budget ideas that said nine twelve, we actually pushed that to ten-four. So if you're looking at my budget timeline, we had a conversation yesterday around needing a little bit more time to get Tim Hart at each site with each principal doing a walkthrough. Cause we have a great starting point list from Gary. But we really wanna get principals' input on, is there anything missing from the list that we need to put on the list? So that we can have that in reasonable shape to bring the finance committee uh, and build that budget with those Buildings and Grounds packages on there. There is some discretionary funding built into the budget. We've typically, the last couple of years, put sixty thousand in that, that the theory would be that Buildings and Grounds can set some priorities and we can start chipping away at that sixty thousand. Uh, we are looking at forty-two thousand currently at this point there. Uh, if you think back to our discussion about, uh, fuel prices and some of the swings in fuel prices, uh, that, that discretionary funding is what padded some of those purchases. So that's why it's down to forty-two at this point. Stan, shout if I got that wrong. So we are planning on having some of that work done with Tim to build out those Buildings and Grounds priorities, see what they would cost above that sixty thousand that's already there. Have some, have some potential packages to run, run in front of folks and get their feedback from the community. Uh, we're hoping to have a joint Buildings and Grounds and Finance meeting on that October fourth date. So that we can do that work together. Uh, in the meantime, uh, this underlined, bolded part, begin building district budgets from the ground up, taking all needs into account at each site, that is different. Uh, I mentioned that last night at the B and G meeting. That's something that we hadn't really talked about yet, uh, but I had been talking with Stan about. Actually, he approached me, uh, I'm not gonna pretend this was my idea. He approached me and said, hey, um, how, how do you think this would go? Do you think it would be reasonable to start from scratch and build a budget? Instead of, let's figure out how much we need to cut, okay, let's find what the least painful place to cut is. We've done that for a while and we're running out of places to cut. We're trying to be smart with administrative costs and try and find the right level of administration uh, to work with the levels of personnel and the numbers of students that we have. We're, we're committed to that work. But we're getting to a point where it's harder and harder and harder to cut. So Stan approached me with the idea of, why don't we start with zero? And say, what do we need to build a great program? Let's meet with Kalen Thompson at the high school and let's have that conversation with Kalen. And figure out what do we need to build a great program? Then when we look at that number, we have all the things we need and there will likely be things that didn't make that list. There will be things we didn't say we needed to build that great program. Uh, and those in theory would be a decrease in cost. They wouldn't be a cut. They would just be things that we never put in the plan. We would do that work with each principal so that we would have, uh, their, their intimate knowledge of how things work in their buildings. And how, you know, a three-four teacher up at Shrewsbury and how you handle a three-four joined class is very different from having a fourth grade teacher at Wallingford. Uh, it's just a different, different way of running a class, cause you're teaching two levels of students. So that we would have that principal's perspective, so that we wouldn't be making decisions district level and not acknowledging that our schools are different. And there are reasons for that and, and they're appropriate. So our goal would be, you know, not to come with a budget that is pie in the sky. We're building the best program in the world, so we're getting the best of everything in the world. And our student, you know, our teacher-to-student ratio is gonna be no higher than ten. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about how do we, how do we reasonably build solid programs? What does that look like? I would anticipate that we would have a small increase in our budget, not a large increase. Because if we focus on what are the things we need and other things fall off, uh, we will be, you know, quote, cutting things, but we'll be focusing on what we need first. So I anticipate there'll be a little bit of an increase. You know, the technology that you were talking about, Josh, uh, we can't do that with the budget we have. Uh, so there will be places where we will ask for more, but I think it's not gonna be, they're not gonna be gigantic asks. Any thoughts on that change in how we would do things, Len?
Yeah, I just, and this goes back to having conversations, um, with principals in the school buildings around, um, you know, just how things are working. And I think, um, one of the things that happened when we became a unified school district was we became a unified school district. And to some extent, the wishes and concerns about individual building principals kinda got left on the back burner. So I, I think what you're saying is, is a great way to go about it. Because again, I know we're a unified union school district, but Wallingford is different from Clarendon and, and Tin Smith and they're, they're different. And so they have different needs. So I really applaud the idea of looking at those specific different needs in each of the individual schools.
Appreciate the merger, uh, history, cause I know you were, you were involved in that and I was not. So I appreciate that context. Other thoughts, other Doug?
One, one situation too that we, uh, we not only talked about, um, coming out on the middle of October, probably about doing that on a regular basis, that, that Building and Grounds, uh, with Tim, will attend each of these schools, maybe every two weeks and every other month, whatever they may need. But it will be a continual issue if something happens. Um, we need to, to be able to have him know what's going on and get it fixed up. And I, we all had, um, each of the elementary schools, and high school side here too, had a janitor that was, uh, pushed around and made do things and, and, and did stuff within the school he was in. Why the principal doing that? Right now, that's been, that's been moved around. There's still some there. I don't think it's, uh, as, is, uh, the same as that person was doing before. It's a different situation when, uh, when they're thinking they're not getting things done. And we've, we've sort of slowed things down a little. I think it's good if we can push around and have him do the, the better stuff.
And, and Doug, thank you for that reminder, cause I mentioned that before, but I didn't mention that now. Tim meeting with principals is not a one-time shot, we built a budget, we're done. That's an ongoing expectation that I have, that Tim is meeting every other month and doing that walk of the grounds. Cause I think that, again, relationship, that matters. Cause if, if Tim is working with principals closely and building those relationships, then great things are gonna happen, I think.
Just one other thing and, and I know it's difficult when, when you're looking at the, um, athletic director.
Yeah, yeah.
What they're classified as, I mean, and this is true, not just here, it's true in, in other schools I've worked with. Um, you know, they, their input on Buildings and Grounds is critical. Their input in the school buildings is critical. So I just think it's really important that, and I'm sure you are, um, that, that that individual gets included.
Yeah, and actually, no, that's a great point, Len, cause I did not mention that. Uh, when I, I shared with the leadership team that that was my expectation. And I actually, I was thinking, Kalen Thompson, high school principal, you walk around with Tim. Kim Benieri, athletic director, I want you to walk around with Tim too. And they said, well, why don't we do that together? I said, hey, fine by me if you wanna do that. So yeah. When, when I say that Tim will do Mill River, then, uh, Kim and Kalen would be both walking through with him. Cause that's an important piece of Buildings and Grounds and that relationship matters. Yep, yep, thank you.
Uh, I have a question for, uh, this Len and Doug. This would be for either of you because you have the most experience. I'm just thinking, am I mistaken? Did we not previously have Buildings and Grounds expenditures in some ways funded by state government? Was there a shift in the way we fund Buildings and Grounds? Uh, that we wanna talk about as a whole board or should we be aware of as a whole board? I feel like that's something I've heard of, but that's, that's where it stops.
Who, who remembers when that happened? Cause I, I.
I don't.
You're, you're right, Liz, but I don't remember when that happened. Ten years?
Uh, I think longer.
Maybe longer, okay.
Okay, so just basically, so that the whole board knows that it did not historically fall on, wha, wha, how would I say this? The municipality or the local electorate? To fund building maintenance of our public schools? That used to be a state expenditure and at some point, that state expenditure was moved to the local level. Which puts additional pressure on, uh, the local municipality, just so folks are aware of that change.
Oh, Stan, Stan's gonna jump in.
I think I know what you're talking about, cause it was even way before my time. It was called State Construction Aid. And I think Mill River might have been the last color district to, to receive instruction aid. And they did one of their additions or renovations that I had at the high school. And that might have been back maybe around two thousand five, two thousand four.
It was, it was before that.
Years before that, yeah. I mean, it goes back. I mean, the State Construction Aid, uh, Construction Aid still remains on the, on the books, in the law or whatever, but there's no money in there to, to fund any of these, uh, projects, uh, any of the major projects that schools wanted to do. Um, that's, this brought up very so often about restarting it, but ever since COVID hit, I think it's kinda died down with all the federal money that's been out there to fund, you know, construction projects. Or currently, there is no, there is, the concept is still there, but there's no money in that, in that fund.
Can, can you explain a little bit about, or just frame why that was done?
It was just to update, uh, district buildings in the state that have gotten run down. I mean, if you met certain qualifications, if, if your project that you were proposing met, uh, certain qualifications, then you got approved for State Construction Aid. Like I said, the, you know, the last, when I first got here, I, like I said, I think the, you know, Mill River for one of his last projects here at the high school, they received about five hundred thousand dollars from that fund, uh, that went towards the project.
Uh, two thousand seven, according to WCAX, two thousand seven is when that program ended. Or, sorry, there was a moratorium put on funding because as Stan said, statute is still there. This, I think this fall, it was either last fall or this fall, the, the Agency of Education has been working to, to get an inventory of all buildings in the state and what kind of shape that they're in. But yeah, there's no promise that they're gonna do anything with that. There's no promise that any funding's gonna come. They just commissioned the report to see, you know, how bad things were.
Cause that, that addition to Mill River was like in ninety-seven, ninety-eight.
So that, that very well could have been funded.
Yeah, I know it was.
Good, good to bring up, Liz. Nick?
Oh, I was just nodding to, to Len.
Uh, so at that point, uh, we move into a routine that is more or less standard from what we've done in the past, with the exception of late November. I highlighted there what I mentioned previously, another effort, having some focus groups and getting public input. Uh, having some different sites throughout the district, so folks can come to a school or a location they feel comfortable, some different times a day, trying to get some groups of folks in to get some feedback on, are we on the right track or not? You know, we had a lot of conversations last spring around how do we do, how do we do better with the budget process? How do we do it in a way that's clearer? How do we engage more people? And how do we really figure out what the community thinks? I, I kept saying, we need to start this work over the summer. And I wanna acknowledge, we didn't quite start this work over the summer. Uh, but I do hope that we're doing the work in a clearer way. And we are outlining, outlining an approach, even, you know, starting with our first finance meeting in August there, that we're highlighting an approach that's different and we're gonna be engaging the community better. So that we are, we are following through on what we said we were gonna do, even if we're maybe a little behind what we hoped, if that makes sense. Uh, so I'm not gonna go in, into depth on the rest of this schedule, uh, if that makes sense. I think you, you can read through that and this will be an ongoing process and we can, we can take feedback and adjust as needed. But I did wanna highlight the things that were differences and that we can get that out to the public and hopefully, uh, get some engagement in that process. What questions you have about the rest of that?
Good luck.
Okay, thank you. Hey, you're gonna be there with us, Len, so.
Ashley, can I just remind members of the finance committee that it's very important that we have quorum in order to move certain things along? So please make every effort to attend and if you can, for some reason, you know, we will do our best to reschedule. So that, you know, obviously we wanna maximize attendance. So we can certainly discuss changes if changes need to happen.
I have one quick question.
Yep.
Public input. When we get to November, uh, assuming that you have one coffee event in September, one coffee event in October. Um, I know Kristen's been having stuff in Shrewsbury.
Yeah.
What, uh, what type of percentage or what type of feedback are we anticipating or expecting for these?
Yeah.
In November, like, does three people show up? Is that something?
You know, I have no idea, cause we've never really, we've never really approached public input this way.
Cause, cause obviously budgeting is always sensitive and the more feedback we get, the better.
The other part of the public input is the surveys. So like, if we are seeing more emphasis of some, something in general coming in from the surveys that are gonna go out, that's another potential avenue for what, that's why it's like, when we're, those surveys are getting administered, it's our job, all the people in this room, to make sure the people, if people are talking to you, tell them stop talking, go fill out the survey, like, it's, also, but like, we need that information. Cause it's too late. Like, I, I get what you're saying. Like, do you, it, it might feel like it's too late to start trying to get people in. So that's why when these surveys come out, when these coffee meetings are, it, we are the active members of the community. It is our job to try to get people butts in those seats or filling out.
Finance meetings are public, but we don't wanna rely on, that's the only way. You know, we wanna create some other avenues and we'll see which is the most successful. But I think if we have several strategies for getting that input, we'll get more. If we, if we were just saying, oh, we'll do the focus groups, we'll see who shows up and nobody shows up, you know, we'd be in trouble. So I think, uh, trying to get that feedback through several different avenues will be important, but we'll see. It might be something that we go, hey, not, people couldn't make it. People are busy and the timing wasn't good. Maybe we adjust the timing next time. Adjust the timing, we still don't get people, well then gosh, we gotta figure out a, a different way to get that input. That is a good question. We'll see, we'll see.
Community feedback's very important.
It is, absolutely.
You know, it's been, I bet you it's been five, maybe six board meetings since we've really had any public comment. And, uh, whether, whether it's positive or negative, we need feedback. I mean, so we've gotta try to get the community re-engaged again.
Yeah, I agree.
We said a lot of stuff about other ways we might make ourselves more accessible to, whether that was going to services or a library. We talked about whether it would be appropriate for us to show up to town meeting day to just be open for any questions.
Yep.
Um, about ways to like be really explicit about if we are asking for something, why we're asking for it and what the data is about that. So, you know, Brian and I were talking about woodshop today. There's a big waiting. So, you know, Brian and I were talking about woodshop today. There's a big waiting list for woodshop. So if we ask for more woodshop, we want to be able to show you the why.
Yep.
And the community.
Yep.
Yep.
And, and some of this is absolutely new work, so we'll, we'll see. But we better be mindful of, if it's not working, adjust our strategy. Not just be happy with, well, we're not hearing from people, so we must be doing okay. Let's, let's find people then. Let's find people, yeah, yeah.
I had a community member tell me once at the dunk, you just don't worry about it. I'll let you know when you screw up.
Yeah, fair enough.
You know, and, and that's, that's the attitude that some folks have.
Yeah.
So, I just, you know, and that's not what we want. I would prefer to hear from them before we screw up.
And I want to do our due diligence and make that possible. Yeah, my door's open, but it might be hard to get down here, you know, I need to do more than that. We need to do more than that.
Are you all set?
Yep, absolutely, thank you.
Moving along, the next agenda item would be board member attendance. Now, this is something that I had personally asked the last meeting to be added. Board member attendance is very important. If we don't have a quorum, the district can't move forward. Board member attendance hasn't been that much of an issue during the actual board meetings tonight. We have, I think, three board members missing last week, or two weeks ago, we had two board members missing. We're hitting quorum. It's the other meetings, you know, the finance, the buildings and grounds, the personnel. I mean, we had our, our special meeting two weeks ago, and we didn't have quorum until six forty, and it was a six o'clock meeting. You know, I mean, we owe it to the community, we owe it to the district to be here, so. I don't know if anyone else has anything they want to say, but if anyone wants to jump in.
I think there needs to be a mechanism where people respond and say, I either will or will not be there, so that we know in advance. So that the two people don't show up here and waste their evening and can't function, not knowing who's going to be here. We ought to know that in advance.
Yeah, so would be, so one solution, so for that would be, as the warning goes out, also for, you know, for us in the board meeting, or the people on that committee, also get one of, what's it called, the, the thing where we vote for the days.
Yeah, yeah, I'll be there, I won't be there, I'm not sure, you know, I mean.
Well, I think it speaks to what Liz mentioned earlier, which I thought was a pretty good segue into this topic. Notification of the committee chair, and I'm talking more to committees, because I think that's where the bigger problem is.
Yes, with the committee chair.
That, the committee chair should be notified if you can make it, or even if you can. I mean, it doesn't take much to send an email saying, I'll be there or not. And then, if it looks like there's going to be two of us at the personnel committee meeting, then, okay. You know, why, why would we have it? And, for the most part, and I, I'm probably guilty of this, and Dan's going to throw our computer at me.
Move back.
I, no, it's, it's getting the agenda out as, as committee chair. You know, part of the issue is Lenny doesn't get his agenda, necessarily get his agenda out soon. So I think that's something, as committee chairs, we need to take responsibility for as well. And, and I'll throw myself under the bus with that one, because I am guilty of that, I really am. It's easy to sort of just put it off, and I'll get the agenda done, I'll get it done, I'll get it done, and then, there I am, and Ann's going, already. So, I, I think that's one thing, but I think the other thing is really letting the committee chair know whether folks are going to be there or not.
Lenny, can I dovetail that?
Sure.
Um, so, because I personally am overwhelmed by the amount of email I get, I would like to propose that perhaps the assumption be that you are going to be at a meeting unless notified the committee chair, and perhaps we could have a spreadsheet with one another's phone number, so that we can pick up the phone and make a call. And just say, hey, I can't make it, I have whatever. Yeah, my life is very hectic.
I think that spreadsheet may already exist.
Oh.
Yeah, Len, Len, don't you? All right, you had given it to me, maybe you're not the owner of it, but you had given me a list of names and numbers. You've got that, Ann?
Yeah.
The other thing that I would say is a thing that we could look at is for how many members we have on a committee. If we are at a number that is, if we added another person to it, doesn't change quorum, then we should have that other, like, we should be aware of how many members we have. So if we, because it's like every other time adds another member of quorum, right? So it's like, make sure that we're, we just, if we had an extra, and then be hyper-aware of if we add another one. To be very diligent about that. So, and I don't know what the numbers we are right now, but if there is a committee where it's like, oh, actually, if we just added one more person to it, it doesn't change the quorum numbers, but maybe it's a higher percentage chance of people showing up.
The difference between four and five doesn't change quorum. Five makes it easier to get quorum.
Five does make it easier, because you need three.
You don't want to do six.
Right, as soon as you get to six, now it's four.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And if you're struggling to get three out of five, it becomes, I think, more difficult.
Exactly.
To, 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 to get four.
In our, in our bylaws, didn't we set five?
Yes, we did, but we also agreed not to.
We'll reorg to fix the ones that have six.
Until we do the reorganization in March. So, and, and. Nobody's probably going to like this, but I'm going to go ahead anyways. A couple of thoughts, and I know we don't get paid much, but I've, I've been in situations where board members take the winter off from December, January, February. And again, it's, let me say, it's much easier now with the hybrid. This was prior to that. And the board eventually voted to not pay the person for all those meetings that they missed. That's one thought. Another one is, and, and I don't want to look at this as punishment, but I, I think it's holding people accountable, is, you know, do we send a letter to the select board saying, you know, Lenny hasn't been to a meeting, just wanted to let you know that? Again, I know those aren't positive things, but I throw them out there. That's all I'll say.
I would echo that and say that there's something to be said with both of those. One, you're accountable. It's no different than going to work every day. I don't go to work, I don't get paid. And two, maybe one meeting is a bit, I don't want to send the select board a note every time they miss one. Hey, they've been delinquent twice, or maybe they've been delinquent three times. There's some quantity of, this is the metric, now you get a note.
Yep. Yeah, I wouldn't do it one, or two, or three even, you know, I think it's, it, when it's, when it's impacting the decision-making ability of the board and its committees, I think we need to think about taking some action.
So, Ken, I would like to speak to that action. You know, in the spirit of, of trusting relationships, I would prefer that if we want to speak with a fellow board member who, whose attendance is problematic, that we, we have that discussion as professionals. I think invoking the select board is a bit over the top. I don't know that it's the best use of our time, you know, where we can just say to a fellow board member, hey, what's going on? You know, if it's impacting quorum, you know, that's something we need to address, because that impacts our ability to get things done, and, you know, we have a job to do. So I would, I would prefer that we have these discussions both professionals, amongst ourselves.
And can I, can I throw three cents in?
Sure.
I, I, thank you. I appreciate the board having this conversation. I appreciate that you brought it up, Matt, and the board is reflecting on how you can do your best work. I, I want to acknowledge that. I'm not part of this conversation, but I'll give my four cents now. I would recommend any shifts in accountability happen at reorg too. So that folks get a heads up and can know what they're getting into. So, accountability, interestingly enough, I think builds trust. And I actually talked about that on opening day. Building trust doesn't mean just making friends, it means following through, and accountability is following through. So I agree that the accountability is important, but I wonder if, like Liz suggests, spending some time, spending some time informally, reaching out to people and having those personal conversations. And then, if we talk about, okay, we're going to change pay, you know, you're going to only get half your stipend if you miss half the meetings, to do something like that at reorg, not now. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, you know, and, and those two suggestions of mine, I know are, are pretty strong. And I do appreciate Liz, what you're saying as well, I really do. You know, I just threw them out there and.
Yeah, and, and accountability is not a bad thing. But I think giving folks, clarifying our expectations and giving folks time to know what they're getting into, makes that accountability work better, because both of those build trust. So that's my four cents.
Do we have anything in the board goals that talks about attendance?
Not of board members. And, you know, I looked in the bylaws too, and the bylaws doesn't talk about compensation even, you know? So I wonder if that's just a board decision. So I, I would imagine you can make that decision whenever you want, without worrying about bylaws. You know, those two actions, you know, changing compensation or notifying select board, I think it's within your ability to make that action when it's duly warned. Attendance is not in a board goal. I wonder if, as we go through our strategic planning process, and we're setting some goals, that that's something that we should be thinking about? I mean, we kind of went down that road, thinking about, I mean, the example of policy. Should we set a goal of how many policies we get through in a period of time? We were having that conversation. So I think as strategic planning plays out, what a great place to start setting some goals for maybe board attendance. Maybe you tie that to the stipend, I don't know. I wonder if, and this is my last cent, I wonder if, when we do our strategic planning work and we identify our goals, maybe we have too many committees. And if folks are trying to get to four committees in a month in a board meeting, maybe the number of committees needs to line up with our goal. Does that make sense?
Can I tie that on that?
We've had the same number of committees for how long? Maybe it's time to rethink about that as we set goals. So that's, and I'm done. Go ahead Liz.
No, thank you, Brian. Amy Martone had brought that up before she resigned, that we might want to examine the number of committees we have, we might want to condense or merge committees, we might want to just reorganize how we meet, when we meet, because, you know, it puts pressure on families and working parents, and, so, thank you for that, Brian.
One, one thing I'd like to suggest is maybe going forward, when the different committees give their committee reports at each board meeting, maybe each committee chairperson can touch on attendance, and can touch on if the meeting was able to start on time because of quorum. And this way, the board can be regularly updated on if progress is being made.
Yeah, well, and, and that's a good point, because the, the board meeting, when we do the full board meeting, it's mentioned who is absent.
In the minutes.
Yeah. And, and so, maybe we should put that on the, the committee reports, yeah.
Because I don't put that on my committee.
Because my, my fear is, is, you know, we're having this discussion right now, it's, it's going well, there's a lot of good feedback. And I just don't want to kind of see this get pushed under the rug, and then all of a sudden, come January, we say, well, I'll just use an example, you know, policy. Well, how come nothing got done on policy? Well, we haven't been able to have meetings. Or, you know, or personnel, or any of them.
I think it's tracking our progress.
Yeah, we, we need to, we need to do better. I mean, I, I'm guilty of it as well. I was on vacation in July, and I missed one committee meeting and one board meeting. I'm guilty of it as well. We're all guilty of it. But, you know, if you miss a meeting here, or maybe a meeting there, we all have lives. But if, you know, we don't see somebody for months at a time, or they miss every other meeting, it can be almost concerning, so.
Okay, so, these are elected positions that we hold.
Yes.
All right, and as a voter, I'll just take myself and become a voter, I would like to be able to go somewhere and see, you know, I voted for that Garland. And what percentage of meetings does he actually show up? Oh, less than fifty percent? Well, jeepers. Shouldn't the voters be able to know?
Yep.
If we're showing up for meetings?
Absolutely.
I don't know if there's a mechanism for that.
That's, that's what Ann does, I mean, in terms of.
It's in the minutes, yeah, minutes. But I, one of the things that I was going to, and it might be too complicated, and we might, it might be an extra step for somebody, but what I was going to say was that, because quorums, not having a quorum disappears, right? Like, you don't, there's not a record of it.
Yeah, right.
And so, if there was just a simple spreadsheet.
Actually, we talked about that with finance. We did not have a quorum for finance.
Right.
But we published, we published minutes, and correct me Liz or Ann if I'm wrong, but we decided, let's publish notes and make it very clear there was not a quorum, but discussion did happen, so.
And, but, so here's the problem with it. It's not tallyable.
Yeah.
So, the absentees is great. If I want to look through every single pair of minutes, I don't necessarily want to give anybody extra work, is the problem, but it's like, if you don't have quorum, here's the Google Doc where you put a check mark in your thing. Because the thing we're talking about with our students and our administrations is data is important. Right now, we all feel like we don't get quorum enough. But how many, how many meetings did we not have quorum this, this year? I couldn't tell you that.
Can committee chairs just track that?
Right, and so it's like, if we, if that is, so if it's in the meeting, or like, because, you know, I'd like it to be something that you could point to, to a voter, or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, I think we all should have a, an easily searchable record of, you know, how we're, what our, you certainly can have that with your, your congresspeople to know whether they're absent for votes or not.
Yeah, that's true.
And, I don't know, I think we ought to be up to the same scrutiny.
If, if there is a way to just, I, I, you know, have a spreadsheet, and then we can really see, like, we aren't doing our jobs.
We care about test scores, let's care about attendance scores.
Yeah, you know, because that's where we can be graded, because we don't get grades on.
The last thing, going back to what Josh said, negotiations, right now, the way the committees are formed, negotiations has four people, policy has five, and then personnel, buildings and grounds, community engagement and finance all have six.
So they might as well have seven. And then we just have a board meeting.
Well, and that's one of the things you do have to be careful of.
Well, I, I think between now and board reorg, we should have a discussion on whether or not we want to consolidate some of the committees together, what we want to do.
And I wonder, we had this as discussion. I wonder if we want to put another item on our next meeting and maybe, well, I don't, you know, we don't need action to track. We track that already.
How about?
I don't know that there's anything we talked about tonight that we want to do immediately that we need action on, so I take that back.
Well, I, I'll speak as committee chair, I will, because there is a precedent in our minutes, to just put on, because we, we mentioned who's virtual, who's present, and who's absent. So I don't think that's a big deal.
Nope, no action needed to do that.
I don't remember who brought it up, if it was Len or Matt, but that's, seems like it's reasonable that that carries on to the committee, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I, as I say, as chair of personnel, I, I will list everybody.
Can, can I summarize? Can, can I summarize? Uh, committees can track attendance, because that's how we take minutes, and that's appropriate. So let's make sure committees are doing that. Can we respond to committee chairs if you're not gonna make a meeting? Not if you're gonna make it, but if you're not gonna make it, let the chair know, so that they can cancel a meeting if needed. We are thinking about if there are some accountability pieces to come into play when we reorg in March. And then, we are thinking about tracking, tracking that attendance to make it easier to find. Um, I, you know, I wonder if I, I can't just start from, you know, next meeting on, or this meeting on, for a full board meeting. Is that what we're really concerned about, being able to say, like, how many full board meetings has Doug missed? Or are we worried about how many committee meetings has Doug missed too? I wonder if just full board is the more important one. Sorry to pick on you, Doug.
No, it's just one, it's okay.
There's one.
Hey, I was, I was working with you down here at the Neotarian when you're doing that, that was interesting.
I can't remember any-
I can track full board meetings reasonably well and keep those numbers. Uh, tracking committee meetings would, I, I will do it, but it would start to take more of my time, and I wonder if it's best used in my time.
Well, someone mentioned a spreadsheet.
Yep. I think it would be in tr- I think if you are signing up to be the committee chair, it's your responsibility to-
Chairs can track their attendance.
To say, put the absentee, and to, maybe your responsibility is to create the Google document. And then it's the chair people's job to edit them.
Okay.
And then if the chairperson isn't doing it, then I-
Yeah, that's a whole different problem.
Send him down again.
Okay.
For, uh, for, for, when we get to agenda building later, um, I think we should put this on the next agenda, so we can
Remind ourselves.
Keep the discussion going, remind ourselves, and maybe a few more people will be here to chime in on the discussion.
Good idea, good idea.
We'll keep the ball rolling on this one, cause I, I do feel this is very important for the district, so. Does anybody else have anything else? We good? All right. We will, uh, move on. The next is
Awesome.
inclusion statement.
So, this was attached, uh, we had some examples of inclusion statements. This was work that we had, uh, public had brought to the board, and we had taken this on, and we had created ad hoc committee to deal with this and an art display. And then we had, uh, I think it was our last meeting, we had shifted the art display to being an administrative committee, and I think that's coming up in maybe late September or October. Uh, but then, we had talked about the inclusion statement just being something the full board can, uh, look at and take on, and- I, I have a copy if you want it.
Paul.
Uh, this is discussion. This is not action, uh, cause it's been a long time since we've looked at this, so I, I, we felt it was most appropriate just to bring it back up, give the examples, and think about, how would we, how would we go about adopting one for the district? Clarendon went through, the town of Clarendon went through this process fairly recently. Uh, so, maybe we can look and see what they did. Their example is on there. The, the, the community member who brought one is on there too, and then there are some other versions. So I, I wonder if the board wants to have a discussion about, how do we move with this?
Brian, do you only have paper copies?
Uh- It's in the email. Yeah, it's, it's attached as materials, if you can find that email, Liz. If not, shout, and I'll send you, to you separately.
Okay, thanks.
So, for me, personally, as an individual, this is really easy. Like, there is, like, I mean, especially the one, like, the one that was submitted by the district resident is like, I don't understand why, how anyone could not just be like, that's the verbiage that we could, like, use. Um, I would think that we could go, uh, further as a school. I think, like, basically, all the other towns in our area have done a statement similar to one of these, similar to the one of, of Clarendon. And, um, I know from people, uh, in Tinmouth, this is one of the things that I get talked, people talk about, why hasn't this been done yet?
Yep.
Um, and, so I really do think, uh, it's something that we as a board really should just get done. Maybe not, we don't necessarily, if, if we don't feel like, if we need some other people that aren't here to talk about it tonight, finish it tomorrow, next meeting, but like, we want all the things that are in these topics, right?
I feel that the one that was submitted by the district resident seems to be worded well, seems to cover all the bases. I don't know what else his opinion is. I know Clarend- when Clarendon did theirs, I believe they got a committee from the town together, they worked on it, they, it was a whole big process. I mean, I know that this has been kind of on the back burner now for about, about a year, maybe thirteen months or so. I don't think that we should drag our feet on it. I don't know what anyone else's thought is, but, kinda my thought process is, is if we keep, there's no benefit if we keep pushing it out, sorry.
So, I agree, the statement's well-written, don't see any flaws or disagreements with it. My question is more related about where or what are we going to do with it? It sits on our website, it sits on the footer of a letterhead, it, it, great, we've adopted this inclusion statement, now we're going to-
Slam it home.
If there's no follow-through, it's, it's only, it's worth what the paper's written.
Well, and I, I'll chime in, and I'll, I'll contribute what I can, and I wonder if Jody, you'll contribute some things I missed. A lot of this, we do without a statement.
That's why I was asking the question.
Yeah. Fair and equal treatment, uh, and discrimination, you know, we, there are federal laws in place that we have to follow, that when discrimination happens, uh, we investigate, and we, we follow some pretty strict, uh, laws when it comes to that, and how we go about doing that work. So, some of this work we do. A culture of inclusion, we've absolutely tried to work on a culture of inclusion, and make our students feel welcome to no matter who they are. So, does adopting this statement change the work that we're doing? No. But does it, does it reinforce to the community that we are doing this work? Yes. So I think it's a, um, does it change what we do? No, but does it give us a little more authority in doing that work? That the board has adopted something that, that condones the work that we're doing? I mean, we're gonna do the work no matter what. We want students to feel welcome, right? I think one of the things that, like, for me, uh, if we look in this room right now, we all have probably similar life stories, all shades of gray, you know, different things. But what one of these statements helps us do is to stop and think, and try to step outside of ourselves. And to do that as an institution is important. Because even if it's, the, the institution has a memory of what the institution is. And, when you adopt statements like this, and you, when you're looking at your goals, and you're looking at your bylaws, and you're looking at the creation of more infrastructure inside of that structure, having just, you know, a thing to just reflect on while you're making those decisions, and another thing to be held accountable to, helps. That's how I view it, for just me personally, why I would want a statement like this in any organization that I was working for. And that's, you know, I don't know how other people feel about it, or, you know, but that's how I, you know, that's how I look at it.
Can I add a little context piece? Uh, so, Brian and I just did some looking at models, um, while we were putting this together. I think it's interesting for the board to know that most schools who have an equity policy also have a statement of inclusion. And so those two things tend to coexist in boards. It is, I think, more common than not to have a statement of inclusion. Um, some boards, school boards have chosen to put the statement of inclusion at the top of their equity policy as a piece of the policy. If you chose to do it that way, that would require the policy committee to edit the policy, but that is a potential procedural way to do it. Um, some boards have chose to ha- chosen to have those two things separate, and have the statement of inclusion in the general board information, um, separate from the equity policy, so that's just one question for the board to consider. Uh, and I do want to just give one piece of just qualitative data. So, a great hire last year said to me, when looking through multiple jobs that they were finalists for, they chose our district because they were able to see, um, some language around inclusion and equity. Um, and that was important to their, they're feeling comfortable here.
Yes.
I agree. But the, the last one, the state, statement of inclusion, from the School of International Affairs, there were parts of it that I liked, because it talks about students, faculty, and staff members. You know, so, so I'm talking about expanding the statement of inclusion, so that it, I, I like this because it reflects, you know, some of the words that they use, I guess is what I, we seek not only to reflect American society, but also to serve as a model for proactively engaging with difference, with respect, dignity, openness, and acceptance. Recognizing the diversity reflects society and can be its greatest strength. I kinda like those kinds of statements.
Yeah, I, I mean, if, I, I agree, I like the bottom one the best for me.
Yeah.
And I think it serves more of, uh, a point, to Nick's point, of like, it is more of directive and saying what it actually means. So I, I agree with it.
I, I just, you know, the fact that it talks, and again, I appreciate what the, what the statement of inclusion submitted by the district resident says. And I think you can use some, I, part of me isn't too crazy about all of the listings, because I'm always afraid that you're gonna leave someone out. You know, I, so, I, I just think it, it's about us as an educational institution, and you spoke to that, Josh. As an educational institution, what is our institution? What do we do here? And it's supporting faculty, the staff, students, and community, I would add, um, in, to ensure that everybody has a chance to reach their full, full potential, do great work, and be a, be a fully enfranchised member of our school community. Now, as I was reading that, isn't that on our board goals or something?
It might be something similar, we've got, we've got those, uh, statements up at the top of the board goals. Um, let me grab that real quick. Uh, would the board like to come back to our next meeting and identify one of these and vote?
That's what I was gonna s- suggest, was-
My, my second option, cause I'm seeing Len, sorry.
Yeah.
Does the board want me to take the two we've talked about and try and merge them? Is there a preference? I like that.
Well, hey, how about that? How about, you know, my, my idea would be, try to merge them the best you can, to try to take the, the, the best ideas from both of them together. We'll put it on agenda building for the next meeting.
Okay.
With the plan of hopefully taking action.
Okay. Uh, what our board goals say, we are a proud public school community, preparing all students for the opportunities challenged life presents. Value quality education, value academic, athletic, extracurricular, support all members of our school community. Mentions, uh, students, faculty, and community to improve. So, yeah, yeah, that gets at some of those things. It, good connection.
Yeah, well, sometimes that happens.
Okay?
All right.
Awesome.
Sounds good.
Ready?
Thank you.
So next, we would be moving on to set substitute bus driver rate.
Stan might chime in on this one, but I'll, I'll take the lead. We had talked at our finance meeting about this, because we were looking at our sub-rate, actually, for bus drivers. We had not raised in about a year and a half or so. Uh, our bus drivers did all get a raise, when our support staff all got a raise this contract year. Uh, so, we were thinking, oh, does it make sense to do that? And we were talking at the finance meeting, and the finance committee was comfortable with us bringing this to the full board. Since then, Stan and I have been looking at numbers and figuring out details, and actually talked to Nicole Peterson, our transportation coordinator too. Uh, the numbers actually don't quite support it. Uh, if we, if we made any bit of a meaningful raise in the sub-pay, we would not be on track with our bus driver salary schedule. Uh, if we look at the current salary schedule and our, our newest bus driver, our least experienced bus driver, and what they make, if we bumped our sub-pay up a reasonable amount, you know, say a dollar, we would mess our table up, because then we would have somebody, uh, the next new driver that came in with no experience would make less than a sub. And, and we don't wanna have sub-pay be more than a contracted driver pay, cause why would you be a contracted driver if you could sub and make more money? So when we actually looked at details and did the math, and figured out where our current people are, that's, I think, challenging for us to do. That puts us in a bind. Uh, we did brainstorm a little bit, because we don't really have sub-drivers. That's not a huge thing that exists for our district. We really pull internal people to sub-drive the majority of the time. So, what I would ask is that the personnel committee allows us to bring a proposal for a, a contracted on-call sub. So somebody who would not just be on a sub-list, but somebody who is a guaranteed sub. And that would become a contracted position, not a, on, not a, you're on a list and maybe we call you. But this would be somebody who we would say, oh, we need a driver today, you're driving, and they couldn't say no. Does that make sense, how that's a little different from a regular sub-driver?
Yeah, totally.
I think it's a good idea, given the, the nightmare of the consolidated bus routes and everything else.
I was just gonna ask, is there a status update on current bus drivers?
Uh, we have our seven drivers that we can run a full route. We hit a scenario where we were down two drivers. So, when, when folks are going in, you know, if they have illness, if there's a medical procedure planned, things like that, if we're down one driver, it's a small impact, if we're down two drivers, it's a larger impact. Yep. So we have, we're fully staffed to be able to run those routes, but if people, if people aren't able to work for a day or two, it, it definitely is a struggle for us. We do have a, another interested bus driver in the pipeline, that I will likely be able to bring to personnel. Um, and if, if you're comfortable with us bringing a in-house on-call sub, to make that a contracted position, I'll bring that too. So we're, we're working, we're trying, um, cause we know that's a huge impact on families, we do.
Yeah, I did feel the phone call.
Yeah.
Not so much that it was consolidated, but that they were fifteen minutes past the consolidated schedule. So they ended up driving their kid in
Yeah.
because they didn't wanna be late.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough.
I think I got that same phone call.
If everybody's okay with that, then we'll approach that, that way. Thank you for letting us, uh, change course after we did our homework and realized it didn't make sense.
Well, if it makes it smoother, I think we need to look into it, so.
Well, and I think it's, if, if we do really have somebody on-call, and they're contracted, then we can pay them for their experience.
Yeah.
Versus a sub-rate, which might not be great, right now. Great, thank you, everybody.
All right, next we are on to the V S B A annual meeting.
That would be Adrian, Louie.
Yep. And Adrian was not sure if she was coming or not. And Adrian was not sure if she was coming or not.
If anyone wants to see it.
Well, I, I mean, it's tomorrow night. I'm planning on going.
Okay.
And I think what Adrian had said was, and I just checked the email to make sure I had it right. If we talked about it tonight, fantastic, if she was here. If not, she had, I think, the second meeting in September. We could have a conversation around who's gonna be the board representative at the October meeting. And is the district gonna pay the, that board member's admission? So I think we can do that second meeting in September. Then in our October meeting, we can look at resolutions and decide how to vote, if that makes sense. So we can push that to agenda building, if that's all right.
Liz, do you know what time the meeting's at tomorrow?
Yes, it's at six o'clock. You do have to register. There's a, yeah, you have to register. So if anybody is interested in joining me, I can forward the email so that you can register. I know Adrian was interested in being nominated as a regional representative. So I was going to make that nomination.
Is that local or virtual?
Virtual.
I was just wondering if it was local or virtual, and Brian said it's virtual.
Yeah, it's virtual.
Liz, I'm just gonna send it now, 'cause I've got the email here. So I'll send it to the full board, just so folks have it, just in case.
Thank you. And, you know, if I am, well, whether I'm going on there or not from, from this board, I'll take notes. I'm happy to report out.
And that's the, that's the webinar about the resolutions. The meeting to vote on the resolutions will come up late October, if that makes sense. Is that right, Liz? Do I have that right?
I believe so, yes. I'll find out tomorrow.
More of an inquisitive question. They have training options and things like that. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And the nice thing about those training options, too, if you sign up for them and you cannot make it, they're virtual, they'll send you the webinar. Which is handy, 'cause then you can view it when you want.
They also have a bunch of them are like, just, like you can listen to the audio.
Yeah, oh, the podcast version of it. Yeah, yeah. Awesome, thank you.
Awesome, thank you. So next, we will move on to, I can't, I need my glasses, special education vendor contract.
Coral. There's Coral.
Alrighty. So this evening, I'm coming to you all just to give you a status update on the. Remote services contract with speech-language pathologist position. I think it was our last meeting, we talked about that, and I did not, at that point, have a candidate. Luckily, since then, a candidate has emerged. So what I'm gonna do this evening is just give you the broad strokes of the contract, and then at the end. I'll hopefully be looking for a motion to, to enter into this contract. This company is Vocovision. This is exactly the same company that we partnered with last year. When we had a, a staff in shortage in special education, so. I can say that I have developed a, an experience and a working relationship with them that, that is quite favorable. I did go through the procurement process of checking into, you know, rates and availability with two other vendors. Who rates were comparable to the one I'll give you this evening, or even slightly higher. So again, I am recommending Vocovision for this partnership. This contract is at thirty-seven and a half hours per week. So in other words, we will have basically a full-time S L P. Who will work remotely, but would work, you know, the same number of hours as someone on a teacher's contract. The rate of service for this person is at ninety dollars an hour. So that was aligned with kind of what I found nationally, but that's something you wanna, wanna keep in mind. It is a ninety-dollar-an-hour rate. And it is for the year, so once we lock in, we are locked in. There is a service termination fee, so if we were to, for any reason, opt to terminate our service, there's a four-thousand-dollar fee. Like an early opt-out type of thing. But once we're, you know, once we get started with that, we're kinda, we're kinda locked in, so just worth knowing that. Yeah, that's, those are kind of the broad strokes of this contract. So I'll, I'll see if you have any questions at this point that I can answer for you, and if not, we'll need a motion.
So Coral, is the ninety dollars, is that a net? In other words, they're, they're not acting as our employee? This is a?
No, it's a fee-for-service contract, so yeah, they, I mean, there are some capacity acting as our employee, but it is, it is different than that. Yeah, this is a contract actually.
So the ninety dollars is, is the net number that we're gonna pay on?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
Anyone else have any questions? Nick?
Assuming we do need to terminate for any reason, is there a timeline based on that? You need ten days' notice, thirty days' notice, sixty days' notice?
Uh, it's just written as, like, as mutually, you know, as mutually designed, so. Having worked with these folks last year, it could be anything. It could be an adverse weather event. It could be that we found our own candidate, you know, whatever.
That's what I'm hopeful thinking is, halfway through the year, you get a new candidate.
Yep. Yeah, no, it doesn't specify any term, but whether I give them a twenty-four-hour termination notice or a two-month, you're still gonna pay the four-thousand-dollar fee.
Which is like fifty hours of time, so it's still in our benefit to terminate if we find a candidate.
Yep, yep, yep. It's, whereas for you, yep, depending on the, the time of the year, yeah, yeah.
Any more questions? Would anybody like to make a motion to enter into this agreement? Peter. Doug?
I was playing you that you wanted it.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Paul? All in favor? Is, is Bruce up there? Yep, alright. Looks like it's unanimous.
Thank you, everybody. We'll get cranking on this. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Alright, so now we are on to committee reports. We will start with Len, personnel.
Yes, we met tonight. We had a corn.
Show off.
So we have several new hires and approval of contracts that we need to go through. And I'll try to. Relatively quickly. First is an employment contract. For Maya Christiman. For educational support staff, one-point-oh full-time equivalency. And I would make that a motion that we offer her a contract.
Matt, Matt's got a second.
Okay.
I'll pick the next one.
Discussion. Sorry, I dropped the ball there. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Next is another contract for support staff, educational support staff, one-point-oh full-time equivalency. For Christopher Johnson, and I will make that in the form of a motion. Is there a second? Doug?
Yes.
Doug seconds that. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstain. Okay. Next is an employment contract for Logan Falkingham. As a teacher, elementary school teacher, K through six classroom, zero-point-four full-time equivalency. And she will actually be operating out of Shrewsbury. So I would make that a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Paul. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstain. Okay, thank you. Okay, next, we have three coaching contracts. Two at the elementary school, Ann, is that right? And one?
Yeah, I think so. Two or three, four, five, six soccer.
Okay.
And one is, um, M S boys soccer.
In middle school, yeah, okay. So, these are contr, they're actually not contracts. They're simply agreements that we pay these individuals a dollar. Because it's basically a volunteer position that they're doing. So I would, I'll do them one at a time. We can move through them. So that we accept Rick Wilson as a volunteer coach with pay of one dollar. I will make that motion. Josh seconds it. Questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Next is the same thing, a volunteer, as a volunteer for Ian Smith. At a one-dollar fee. I would make that a motion.
Second.
Thank you, Paul. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Last one, excuse me. Last one is a, um, for a fifth and sixth girl soccer team. Again, it's the same thing. It's a volunteer. Coaching position for a one-dollar fee, and I would make the motion for Matthew Ringer. Thanks. Matt? Questions, concerns? All those in favor? Opposed? There we go. Okay, so that takes care of the contracts. We have a, a couple of resignations. First is from Jackie Pike, who's a health and phys ed teacher here at Mill River. And she, her, the last day for her position was July thirty-first. And, but we still have to accept her resignation. So I would make the motion that we accept her resignation. Matt, second to that? Discussion. Just to follow up a little bit, we've actually already filled this position here at Mill River. So we'll be okay. She's not leaving us high and dry. Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Next is a resignation from Beth, Beth Thompson, who is a special educator at Timothée Elementary School. Effective August tenth. And it's due to personal matters. So I would make that motion to accept her resignation. Matt, second to that, Ann? Discussion.
Does that leave a void?
Does that?
Does that leave a void?
Uh, we have worked internally to cover that. We're, we're not thrilled. But we're lucky that Timothée, we have fewer students that we need to serve. And we've got, Coral can speak to this a little more if she wants to, but we've got a special educator team leader who's working up there. And we've also got a para educator who's taking on additional responsibilities and duties. So we've got several folks who are filling that gap, if that makes sense. Coral, did you wanna add to that?
Yeah, I just wanna answer Nick's question. Yes, it did leave a void. And, and we did have to scramble. I, I do wanna be upfront about that. We have filled that position now with two staff people. So there is a void, yeah, yeah.
Hiring, hiring special educators has not become easy.
Any other questions? Um, I don't know if I made that a motion or not.
You did. You were a question, and now you're a vote.
Alright, thank you. All those in favor of accepting Beth Thompson's resignation? Opposed? Thank you. We next have a resignation from Randall Cameron, who is a custodian. Here at, in, or in the Mill River Union, Unified Union School District. His last day will be September ninth, twenty-twenty-two. And so I make a motion that we accept resignation from Randall Cameron. Second. Thank you, Matt. Questions?
I'll ask the same question. Does that leave us short?
Yep, we're hiring, absolutely. We had been fully staffed for a little while. Um, we had a rough few years, but we were fully staffed for a while, but we will be trying to rehire.
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Uh, next is a resignation from Carrie Becker, from the after-school program. Uh, she is resigning effective November thirtieth of this year. So I would make a motion that we accept with regret. Carrie Becker's resignation, she's been with the school for quite some time. Second? Is that a second?
That's a second.
Second from Nick. Discussion.
I just wanna say that Carrie has done a tremendous job with that program.
I agree.
And we're, we're lucky that we've got some time to try and hire and transition that, which is good, absolutely.
Yeah, 'cause it's not effective until November thirtieth, so.
Yeah.
Okay? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Nay. Okay. There's only one other thing I'm gonna say. We did discuss, discuss the administrator evaluation tool and the superintendent evaluation tool. And B J Brent did a tremendous job of updating the superintendent's evaluation. What I will send to all of the board members is a copy of the administrator evaluation tool, which is being used this year. As well as the superintendent evaluation tool, which we hope to be using soon. I, I think the important thing is, Brian and the leadership team have really done a great job of. Making sure, and I think they heard that from the board, that it was important, if you remember, we talked about new contracts for administrators. And, and there was very little in terms of evaluations. So I think there's really been a push to make sure that the evaluations are done in a timely manner. Brian has sent out.
And, and comprehensive, not just, oh, we're done.
Yeah.
Something that's clear expectations and accountability.
Setting goals. And examining those goals. And so I think, as I say, Brian and the leadership team have really done a nice job of listening to what the board said. And setting this up so that. Teachers know that they will be evaluated. Administrators know they will be evaluated by whom. And so I, I just think that, that, that's a tremendous step forward for us, so.
Good teammate.
Thank you, folks, for that. And there'll be more information on that down the road. Thank you.
Thanks, Len.
Next meeting, ten, five?
Next meeting is in October. Sometime.
Five, I think, five.
Yeah, that sounds good. Six o'clock.
Alright, perfect. So October fifth at six o'clock.
There you have it.
Next, we'll move on to policy.
Uh, we didn't have a meeting since last one.
Our meeting was Tuesday.
Yeah, it's next week.
Next Tuesday? So that would be the?
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth. At five o'clock, five-thirty?
Five-thirty, I think.
Five-thirty. Okay.
I made to that part.
Alright, perfect. Alright, so moving on. Doug, buildings and grounds? Yeah, we had a meeting last night. It was, I was hoping that Gary was gonna be available. He'd already settled up and had gone by then. But he left the information a lot with Brian, so Brian was a big, a big info person in what we've been talked about. We had a, a big conversation about the issue with Wallingford and the, the lead situation. And we're still sort of not worrying too much about it. The state doesn't seem to, but we wanna make sure that the kids are gonna be safe. So we're working a little bit with Mr. Manfredi. I gotta call him sometime this next couple of days. And sit down with a, with a sit-down and see what's happening. Not much the rest of it, except we were talking, the conversation like Brian and I had just had about. The building and grounds manager here. We'll be meeting with the rest of the, rest of the principals and the different buildings and stuff. We're gonna make sure that we don't have something that is gonna be injuring the kids or causing anything of a, of a danger for them. And he'll be to that probably at least every other week. Maybe he'll stretch it out a little bit further. It depends on, on how the building is looking the first time you go in. You may wanna do it second, third time. We will be getting back together with. We will be getting back together with Liz and the crew from the finance situation, have a joint meeting coming up, I think it's telling me, yeah, fourth of next month, fourth of, uh...
Yeah, I think that's right.
November, November? No, the tenth, the tenth month.
October, October, yeah.
Um, and that will be, uh, I'm not sure of the timeframe, we'll be able to get that...
Yeah, did we set a time for that or whatever?
I don't know if she had.
Have we did set a time? We didn't.
Okay.
Yes, I didn't think we did, so.
Yep, we can always add that in for plenty of space. Other than that, everything seems to be, uh, seems to be okay. Uh, we'll, we'll meet up again then and let you know after.
Thanks, Doug.
Welcome.
I, I'm gonna throw out another question, sorry. And this is gonna sound dumb, but I'd asked previously about the co-generator that's open back at the school.
Oh, yeah. Good question, and I had not followed up on that at all yet, um, 'cause that's not being used.
No, and I don't know if you could sell it for scrap or...
Yeah.
For those that, those that don't know, that was done many, many years ago.
Yep.
That was actually operated, uh, as a diesel-powered generator to generate power. For those of you that might have been around, the ceiling tiles that we had in here were actually a heat situation. They were, they had heat, so that's where the heat for the building was coming from the ceiling, trying to go down. And if anybody knows heat, heat will rise, it does not tend to drop down. So they were, you know, making their head nice and warm, get the rest of them. So when we got rid of that, it wasn't really economical to remove it. The odd thing too about, if, if you look at that, there's a building directly on the left side of that. That building has underneath it, oh, I would say anywhere from thirty feet wide, about close to a hundred foot long and at least eight foot deep, and that's basically there because the water system did not have the power for sprinklers. So what it does is it operates a generator and, and generates water pressure, so the sprinklers you see will be operated from there.
Oh.
That was, that was also part of that, that is still in, in operation. But that, uh, wouldn't it be nice to see that removed? It may be too expensive, although we're having a, a cost situation from the government, thanks to the, uh, thanks to the people in Washington. But there may be a value enough in that to get rid of it, we probably can do some inspection. I think Tim would be a, a pretty good person to look into something like that.
And, and that's on my list, but it's on my really long list.
No, that's...
The other thing, 'cause Kim Benary had brought up the bleachers, that are kind of falling into disrepair and getting to the point where we go, maybe they're not safe, maybe we get rid of them. So we had same conversation, let's work with Tim, let's figure out, is it, is there, you know, can we get a couple hundred bucks? Because it's scrap metal, but somebody will haul it, which that's really what we want. We're not worried about making money, we just wanna go on, so yeah.
And I, you know, I'm, I'm not in any hurry at all. I mean, it's been there for a long, 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 long time.
But let's not forget about it.
But I, every time I drive by, I see it, and it's like, they should paint it or something.
Something, yeah.
Talking about old things that have been there a long time.
Don't, what?
Oh, no, 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 I was, I was at Wallingford Elementary the other day. There's like an old building next to the school, is that part of ours?
That is likely to be demolished at some point.
Okay, I was just curious, I, I wasn't even sure if it was part of the, the property or it's...
That's the old, the foundations used to run out of there, believe it or not. And that building is, yeah, it's, it's not...
It can't be safe, I mean.
Yeah, it, it was getting to the point where it was gonna cost more money than it was really worth to do anything to it, and then doing the old Clarendon building made far more sense to invest in.
I just curious what it was, alright.
Yeah, demoed at some point.
Being used as storage or storing, teachers were storing some stuff in there, but that's, that's it, like, we couldn't get anything from students in that building.
Perfect, thank you. Alright, moving along, community engagement.
I think no meeting.
No meetings, alright, no update, no meeting, okay.
There is one scheduled for thirteenth, uh, next week at six-thirty.
Okay, perfect. So we'll move on to finance.
Good evening, everybody. Let me make this so I can see it already, so for, what am I looking at? Okay, we have the following pay warrant for consideration this evening. So this one's abbreviated T O Y, and I actually don't remember what that is. So do you remember what that was?
No, I don't, I don't.
Is it, is it maybe a grant and not very large?
Yeah.
Teacher of the year.
Teacher of the year, thank you, I was like, I know I looked at it, now I'm blanking, thank you.
Too many acronyms.
Thank you, we have a pay order for teacher of the year in the amount of one thousand twenty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents. We have a pay order from the general fund in the amount of three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifteen cents. We have a pay order from our, from our after-school program in the amount of one thousand four hundred and four dollars and sixty-six cents. We have a pay order from our lunch program in the amount of one thousand six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. And we have a pay order from the general fund in the amount of nine thousand, thirty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents. So our pay orders this evening total, four hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifteen cents. For payroll this evening, we have regular payroll dated August twenty-sixth in the amount of five hundred and eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars and twelve cents. And we have regular payroll dated September first in the amount of six thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty-seven cents for a grand total of five hundred and ninety-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars and forty-nine cents. And I do move that we accept and approve this payroll and these pay orders as presented. So that's my motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Paul, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand.
That is unanimous.
Okay, thank you very much. And the next regular, so as Doug already said, we are holding a joint meeting of five manholes and buildings and grounds on October fourth, and then the next regularly scheduled meeting of the five manholes committee is October twenty-fourth. We are canceling the meeting on September twenty-first.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving along, we're now at transact other legal business.
Yes, sir.
Yes, go ahead.
I need to make a motion that I forgot to make earlier.
Thank you, oh, I totally forgot, Lynn.
I ju, I just popped into my head. Uh, I would like to make a motion to have Matt, uh, sign the teacher contracts that we approved tonight.
Yeah, authorize, uh, vice chair to sign.
Yes.
Contracts.
So, thank you, Liz, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay, there you go, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
And thank you.
Sorry about that.
Thank you for remembering, no, don't be sorry.
Any other, any other legal business to transact? Seeing none, moving along, agenda building.
Board member attendance is coming back.
Yes.
Inclusion statements coming back.
Yes.
V S B A will be on there.
Yes.
On our schedule that we had looked at tentatively, we have sports coming up. If we're comfortable with sports presentation, having the elementary A D there too. And then we had unified arts, so that's our high school department, and Kristen Simonetti would come and present there.
Okay.
So we're starting to get into those school presentations we had mapped out, if folks are comfortable with that.
Another thing, if you think you'll be ready on it, would be maybe getting an update on, um, a representative from the junior class, where things stand on that.
Yes, 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 thank you.
And then, um, maybe just getting an update on the, the, the school bus contract for...
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Where that's gonna be at, so.
Thank you.
Those are my only notes I had over here, so.
Can I add one more thing?
Sure.
I probably should have brought this up during my, uh, my speech. We had a long conversation, um, yesterday about, um, buses and the buses that we have.
Yep.
We're in the process of, normally have done this, to do two buses every year. You get two in, two out, go of damage. The problem is that we aren't really to that point where we have that much of a damage anymore. So what we have been discussing, and we'll probably go a little bit closer into this, because for the next year, we can actually get plenty of time to make the mind up to, instead of getting two buses, to get one bus and possibly one, if not two, of the, the smaller vans that we use. More sure of just a, a small, a larger car for normal people. Most of us, I mean, I put me as in most of us, you look through sometimes, you'll see a bus running around in the, down in the city of Rutland, and there's one bus driver and one or two individuals riding with them. And the bus drive, the bus is taking a certain amount of fuel up and, and climbing and stuff. And the other little one with, I think it's five, uh, five residents in the bu, right in the car.
We can, we can do five without needing a C D L school endorsement.
Yeah, and then you have to go by L five, you have to have a license.
So drivers are easier too.
But we've, we've been able to do that, some of those, I'm not sure about the Spafford thing, I think Spafford has to continue because we've got enough kids going up there. So we're gonna, well, look into that in the next couple of months or so, we'll get to them probably, we'll make everybody a Christmas present, how do you like that? A few dollars off.
Do we have stats on population density for buses?
Uh, what do you mean? Like how many ridership, like, um, don't know if we have that readily available, I'll ask, I'll check.
So, having gotten on, the buses are dismissal the first couple of days, just to check soon. Um, we...
They've been, yeah.
Yeah, we, I mean, it, there's always more in the beginning. Um, there's generally one to two kids per seat, so I'd say roughly thirty kids per bus?
Yeah.
I'm just thinking with eight hundred plus or minus at the high school?
Yeah.
And eight hundred plus or minus at every elementary school, that's significant.
And that's roughly thirty kids on the bus leaving Mill River, and then they head up to the, the elementarys.
We'll bring what we have when we have it.
Yep.
Did you say inclusion statement for next meeting?
Yes, yes, thank you.
And I actually misspoke, um, when I was asking about the student representative update, I said junior class, you talked about sophomore class, so.
All good, all good.
Either way, just representative of the, you know, in general.
And I think, I think, um, Sydney will be here, I believe, and if we have another rep, great, yeah, awesome.
Any other, uh, agenda building items on the floor? Seeing none, um, executive session, is any required tonight? Alright, well, if no one objects, I say we adjourn.
Nine oh three.
Yeah, nine oh three.
Not bad, a lot of good work, thank you, everybody.